Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled, yet affordable, family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. You'll enjoy our attractive waterfront and beachside accommodations. So visit us online at gogreenharbor.com.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to record this meeting? No? Okay. Thank you very much. We always ask that question. Now we come to public comment. Public comment is two minutes. Mr. Dufresne.
For the record, my name is Adrian Dufresne, resident precinct two and a resident of Falmouth Heights for 61 years. I'm here tonight to complain, not complain, to criticize the selectmen's decision for issuing a one-day alcohol, not alcohol, I think it's beer and wine, license on the fireworks night from 3:00 to 8:30 at night. They already have four liquor licenses in that immediate area. They also, over the years, I've noted that people go there with their colas, so there's outside drinking. I question the wisdom of adding another liquor license for that particular occasion. If they want to serve hot dogs and cold drinks to the kids, I would say that's a good fundraiser. But a liquor license, you people are the licensing authority with a tremendous responsibility. I don't care what safeguards you want to put. You cannot safeguard enough against alcohol. There's 25,000 people in Falmouth Heights. The lines of the cars coming in the heights and leaving the heights are unbearable now. The police have the workload cut out for them to the extent where it forces their patience. I'll use that one for another one. I've donated to the fireworks as an individual ever since their inception. I've never been because I think it's a family-oriented event and people will continue to contribute to it. But to allow them to have a profit-making liquor license is beyond, I think, the rationale of your Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Dufresne. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under public mats? Mrs. Hayward.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, Precinct Five. I have been a resident of West Falmouth for 42 years. I'm making a comment which I hope relates to a topic that invites participation by the Board of Selectmen. I would invite the Board of Selectmen and the administrator and assistant administrator to participate in a conversation with the residents of Falmouth concerning historic preservation. Falmouth is a Preserve America community. Chairman Flynn spoke at Highfield Hall at the time the town received this honor. The preservation, the historic character of the community has economic benefits to the community. When you discuss your five-year plan, please include as a goal the maintaining of the historic character of the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Hayward. Is there anyone else under public comment? Yes. Mr. Mustafa.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. The reason I'm here tonight is I was a little upset, but as the chairman of the Veterans Advisory Council, I'm just here to observe what's going on and what the outcome of this is. And I know there are other veterans in the audience also that had contacted me about this. So that's basically it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on to the next section of our agenda, which are the minutes of the public session for June 2, 2014. Are there any amendments?
I have no amendments. I have approval of the June 2, 2014 minutes as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? The motion carries unanimously. That's all we have on minutes tonight. So we'll move on to the summary of actions. And under that, the first item is the renewal of a seasonal convictual license for Smithy's. He's had this already. It's just renewing the license he already has. He's a purveyor of ice cream, and people really like his ice cream. So is there a motion?
I have approval of the license renewal for Smithy's.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Now, we're going to move to the administrative orders, and we have a few of those. And I'll just read them, and if you wish to hold them, you can so indicate. Approve payment invoiced from M.R. Source Company, Inc. in the amount of $599.28 from the Beach Department donation account. Approve a commitment letter to contribute $250,000 from the community preservation funds toward the purchase of perpetual conservation easement on the Oyster Pond Headwaters Protection Project. And lastly is to authorize the town manager's attendance at the ICMA Annual Conference. Does anyone wish to hold any of those? If not, a motion to approve?
So move approval of the three administrative orders?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. The next section deals with special events. And I know some of the new members have not been here when the policy and the procedure was changed for special events. But we have a special events working group that now reviews all of the applications that come in for special events. And after they review them, and they are members of the various departments, Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works Department, and other departments in the Town Hall, and they recommend to us whether or not the board should approve them. And there's a categorize, so the first category is recommended recurring. That means that these events have occurred previously in the town, usually on an annual basis for several years. And I'll read them off, and if you wish to hold them, you can say so. The 37th Annual Paul White Road Race at North Falmouth Library, July 5, 2014. The 24th Annual Falmouth Walk, Town Hall Square, August 16, 2014. The 4th Annual David Lewis 5K, Terhune Drive, August 30, 2014. The Main Street Mile on Main Street, Walker Street, and Surf Drive, September 7, 2014. The Autumn Escape Bike Track, which is a pass-through town from September 26 through September 28, 2014. The 37th Annual Cape Cod Marathon and Half Marathon and Relay, October 25 and October 26, 2014. The 36th Annual Falmouth in the Fall Road Race, Woodsole to Falmouth Heights, November 2, 2014. The Laughter Yoga Marine Park Band Show, Mondays, July 7, 2014, through the Mondays ending with August 25, 2014. And the last is the Annual Summer Bazaar at the Lakoid Congregational Church at Parsons Lane, which was one way for that day, from July 11 through July 12, 2014. Anyone wish to hold any of those? If not, a motion to approve?
I recommend approval of the special events ones through nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. Now, this is recommend new. The committee is recommending these. These are new events for sometimes in the summer. The first is the Falmouth Corral Concert at the Marine Park Band Show, Tuesdays from July 15, 2014 through end, rather, July 22, 2014. A beach wedding for Rachel Cortland at Woodneck Beach, September 6, 2014. A beach wedding.
Hold.
Hold?
Yes.
A beach wedding for the Tobias Martin couple on Menon Beach.
Hold.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to approve 10, the Falmouth Corral Concert?
I have approval of the Falmouth Corral Concert on Tuesday, July 15 and Tuesday, July 22.
Can I second that?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carries. All right. We held to the beach wedding on Woodneck Beach. Ms. Moran.
On both of these, I just have questions whether the Beach Committee has weighed in on it, as I've seen in the past, because there were particular concerns about parking. And in fact, one of, in part of the information, talked about whether or not parking would be limited, if there was weather, good weather for maybe beachcomers, you know, to need the use of the parking lot. So I really would ask for the Beach Committee's, or Mr. Hopper's, input on both of these.
Usually, we receive that from him, but I know we have response from the Fire Department and one from John Lyons and the Highway, but I don't see one from the Beach Department. So these have been recommended, and I understand what you're saying, that parking isn't issue in both of those places.
Particularly where one will be 60 people from 1:00 to 3:30.
Being so close to the season, September 6, I can understand that concern. The May 16 one, I'm not sure I'm as concerned about parking at that time of the year, but September 6 still is very much in our busy time.
And we have plenty of time to get input from the Beach on the May 16 one.
That's true.
Yeah, the Highway Department said this is in the beach off-season, and it should not create any issues for them, with the exception of rubbish. But there isn't anything that relates to the number of sign parking. So the only thing I would suggest we do, and if we hold it, is to continue it until next week, until we get something back from the Beach Committee. And the same is true for the Martin and Tobias wedding as well. So, yes.
Do our town administrators have any insights from this working group review?
The Beach Committee is aware of it. Mr. Hopper is aware of both of the events. I believe they both need the beach policy for events that has already been previously approved by the Beach Committee. He was unable to attend the working group meeting, so we didn't have any other contribution from him. So there's no problem with waiting another week and awaiting Mr. Hopper's approval.
Madam Chair, it'd actually be two weeks.
Oh, that's right.
Your next formal meeting will be the 23rd.
Let's see, well...
Shouldn't be a problem, I wouldn't think.
No, one's next year.
Given the date.
And the other one is in September. So I think we have plenty of time
Right.
to hold them for two weeks. So we'll just do that. Okay, then we want a motion to approve, we already did that, approving the Falmouth Corral. Okay, then the last one is one that is not recommended. And that is the one for the Marine Corps League Voluntary Toll Booth on Main Street in front of the post office on August 23, 2014. And I know that we had some issues with this last year. And I don't know, Heather, do you want to have any comments from the committee? We have their...
Only if it's held by the board. It hasn't been held by the board. We're just gonna hold it and discuss it, and we can comment on it.
Yeah, we can do, if you want to hold it and have the Events Committee give us more information on why they are not recommending it. Beckett, you want to...
I think that last year when this happened, there was a lot of confusion on Main Street, especially in front of the post office. And then as people were going down for the Woodsole Road, the people collecting on this were actually in the street stopping cars. There was an antique sale at the congregational church. It was just a lot of confusion at that time. And it was the fact that they were coming off the sidewalk and into the street. And I rolled down the window and gave some money. But it was not a safe activity in thinking about how that happened last year.
So is she holding it?
Yes, Sam. I thought you were gonna say, well, I agree. I happened to be on Main Street last year, too. And I know the Fire Department has held the similar boot donations. And it appears from anyone looking at it that it creates periods of not being safe. And people are trying to cross the street. People are trying to go to different events, especially down here in front of the post office. It tied up a lot of traffic, as I recall, on that particular day.
Do you need a motion to hold?
Well, I don't think we need, we don't need a motion to take, we could have a motion to take it up at two weeks from now at our next meeting after we receive a more detailed report from the working group. Would that be?
I think what Heather's just saying is that she'll give us information if we ask for it.
Oh, is that what you're saying?
If we hold it.
Oh, I thought you were gonna hold it.
The board hadn't held the item.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, then.
As you know, the working group includes representatives of the Police Department. There was a sergeant and lieutenant present, Highway Department, the Fire Department. There are two representatives of the Fire Department present, representative of the Building Commissioner was there, Health Department, Marine Environmental Services, and the Town Manager's Office. That meeting, there was a very similar discussion to the board's discussion just now. But more importantly, the board has adopted a special events policy that has consideration in it that asks the working group to consider special consideration for events that occur in the Main Street area of villages in the months of June, July, and August. And it sets a very high threshold for any events that have any impact on traffic or parking. And this particular event, while a very valuable event for the Marine Corps, by its very nature and definition impedes traffic flow during the month of August. We heard the same sort of communication from employees who work on Saturdays and were sort of involved in that multiple times, that it is an activity that impedes traffic on both sides of the traffic of the Village Green. And you'll note on the back of the referral form that it, one, that it doesn't meet the special events policy that this board drafted and approved, and two, that if the board chooses to recommend it, which is this board's option, that we recommend that the toll takers remain on the sidewalks and should not work within the roadways and should not stop traffic. So that's the recommendation of the working group. It simply doesn't meet the policy established by the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, Sam?
Can I ask you a question? I know that the Fire and Rescue do a charity drive at that intersection where the Stop the Shop is at Jones Road, Mr. Court, and David Straits. And of course, you have the traffic lights that stop traffic and make it a little easier for, you know, people to approach people and ask for a donation, and you're not necessarily stopping traffic. And it is a little bit more open, instead of that very narrow bottleneck there between the bank and the post office. I just wondered, do we continue to approve that? And is that an alternative venue that might even be more effective?
Well, that hasn't come up yet. Yeah.
There was a discussion of that, and as you imagine, there are two members of the Fire Department participating in that discussion with the working group. They are aware of a very robust conversation of the prior sitting Board of Selectmen vocalizing and verbalizing their concern about these events that stop traffic and impede the flow of traffic during the summer season. They have not applied for that this year and are awaiting the outcome of the discussion.
Oh, okay. Yes.
For a third year in a row, I will continue to vote against any of these toll booths on the streets. And no matter what the organization is, they're very important organizations. I support them, but I do not support this way of fundraising. I think it's a dangerous precedent. I think it's also a very awkward thing to be driving by either the Marines or the Fire Department and to have that pressure from wonderful people there. I'm very uncomfortable with, and I will continue to vote against them, no matter which organization it is.
Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brad Hutchenreiter. I am a, I was brought up in Falmouth. I went to the Falmouth schools. I joined the military, Marine Corps, in 1963. I served for six years, came back home, ran a business in Falmouth for 42 years. I know Falmouth well. I'd like to give, this is a very short read, I'd like to read it to you. First, I'd like to apologize for not having more precise reporters. We were only notified last Friday at 7:00 p.m., to a pay Monday at 5:30. My commandant, I am the past commandant, and I have been the commandant for five years, and I turned over the reins to Mr. McGuire, who is out of state tonight. So he asked me to represent him. In 1968, the Marine Corps League was chartered in Hyannis as Detachment 25 Cape Cod. It started out with approximately eight Marines, some still active and some retired. From 1968, the president now has 57 members. We support numerous organizations from our area of responsibility, from Dennis to the One Bridge. Some of these organizations are the Angel House, Abatted Women's Shelter, the Shabad Temple, local police departments, fire departments, veterans who need special ramps for wheelchairs, the Independence House, which houses families that are temporarily without a place to live. We donate to the Yamas Women's Club, that also supports veterans, and VA hospitals. Last year, we personally Christmas shopped for 135 children who were from these broken homes. And when I say we custom shopped, we asked them what they wanted. That's what they got. Our detachment also has the honor of... Our detachment also has the honor of providing ritual military services for all veterans that have passed on, in funeral homes, in burials at the National Cemetery. We also have an honor guard that attends all these special services and memorials at churches. On the average, we take part in six funerals a month. If you look in the paper and see a flag by the name of the deceased, we were probably part of that service. We also contribute to the needy fund on Cape Cod. Last month, the Marine Corps celebrated its two-hundred-and-thirty-eighth birthday. This event was held at the Cape Codder in Hyannis, and our guest speaker was Sheriff James Cummings. Since the beginning of Detachment One Twenty-five, we have given out scholarships every year, starting out with three five-hundred-dollar scholarships way back when. And over the years, with help such as yours, we have grown to five one-thousand-dollar scholarships. We send out scholarship forms to ten schools from Warren to Dennis. These applications are sent out to the guidance councils to be distributed to those that qualify. On the average, we receive roughly about seven or eight applications. In two thousand and eleven, Ashley Blenck from Falmouth, and two thousand and fourteen, this year, Megan Anderson, were all Falmouth students that were recipients of such scholarships. It's a great feeling to see the expression on these young bright students when they receive their award. I know that college today is all-consuming, as far as money goes, but at least we gave them a helping hand realizing their dreams. We have, for the past four years, held voluntary toll booths in front of the post office on Main Street with no incidents. The Marine Corps League would like to thank you, thank Falmouth, for the support in the past and in the future. That's, that's what I'd like to say, and we have checked after every year with the Police Department to see if there have been any complaints or any incidences on Main Street, and we have found none in four years. Granted, there is a great amount of traffic in the summer on Main Street, and I know exactly what you're saying is, it looks like we're holding up traffic, but we really aren't. As far as standing out in the middle of the street, that's what a toll booth is. We put up safety cones, and we chose that particular place in front of the post office because it's choked down, and people have to slow down to blend into the traffic there. So, it makes it very easy for us to hold out a helmet and say, "Thank you very much." This is where the money goes. Falmouth has been our biggest contributor of the three towns that we do hold toll booths in. I can't say thank you enough. That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you for those kind comments, and I don't think there's anyone here that does not support the work that you do in the Marine Corps and all the charities that you fund, I mean, and the scholarships. It's immense, and it's an immense contribution to the community, and we really do appreciate that. And this came up because we have taken a look at what happens here in the summertime related to traffic and people's ease to, to access the Main Street, to use it for shopping or dining, or whatever that might be. And anyway, so that's, that's the major concern here, and the board did vote a policy last year, and that's what we're, we're dealing with now is the policy of the board, but thank you, and we'll
We, we
continue our discussion.
Yes, we, we chose the post office because it was a slower flow, and I know what the Fire Department does, and I really sympathize with them because they're really putting themselves in harm's way on Jones Road and Twenty-eight. That's, that's too fast of a speed for, for any safety. So, thank you.
Well, Mr. DeFrain.
Quick comment.
Sure.
Adrian DeFrain, speaking as Commander of the VFW Post Twenty-five Sixty-nine. Realizing the sensitive, sensitivity of these two organizations, both the Marines and the firefighters in their fundraising efforts, VFW would like to be on record as strongly supporting their efforts in providing the services, not only for the veterans returning, but for the people that they serve, when I think you heard about scholarships and help to women's organizations and whatnot. So, I really would strongly support your reconsideration of your denial.
Thank you.
Or denial intended. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Fineran.
Mark Fineran, Precinct Six. As I recall, they've been doing this for years, and anybody who drives through there can see that the traffic goes very slowly. I mean, these men are grown adults, I mean, they're Marines. I think they're capable of maintaining themselves in traffic. The, the funds that they raise fill a great need, and everyone knows it. I mean, it's in the news now with, with the care that our veterans are getting. I think that some people, this has come up before when we had a different selectmen, and I think some people are inconvenienced, but I think you should consider the greater good. These people inconvenience themselves, they put their lives on the line, they've traveled to different countries, they lost arms, legs, and eyes, and even their lives. I think you should consider their inconvenience and allow this to go on. It's a great and valuable effort. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, let's go back to the board discussion. Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
So, I echo the fact that it's a great cause, as has everyone, but the, it comes down to the fact that the Police Department in charge and who we have entrusted with the public safety does not recommend the request, so for that reason, I cannot vote in favor.
Sam?
I think there's one more thing, too. I, I drive a bus four days out of the week, and one of the things I notice is when people get distracted, they make bad choices, and it bothers me that, you know, you've got an extra distraction in that already congested area, so that it may not be one of the Marine Corps League people that actually would get injured. It could be some pedestrian that happened to be crossing at the time, and then all of a sudden, the driver who's trying to fish out some money to contribute suddenly takes off and hits somebody that he didn't see. So, I just wanna throw that out. I see distraction, and we know about cell phones as one of the big danger issues, and that just seems like that's one more distraction in there. As much as I laud the goal of this organization, I hope, I wish we could find a better place where there could be less of it, and that's why I thought maybe the traffic bike, where there's a natural stopping of the cars, people could be approached when they're standing still, would be a better way to handle that kind of a charity drive and do it the way you're describing it. And potentially could raise more funds because people are stopped anyway, they're more likely to reach into their pocket, pull out a contribution.
Anybody else?
I would just add one more, that some towns handle this with the parking lots at the supermarkets, and they are not in the streets, and I have contributed because it's a parking lot of a supermarket, and it works well, and, or it appears to, because there's enough people there contributing. So, if the point is to have contributions, I believe there's another place other than Main Street.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Does anyone care to make a motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion, that, I, I have it right in front of me. It's, it is not recommended.
It is not recommended by the working group, yes.
And that is
The Marine Corps League Voluntary Toll Booth on Main Street.
And that is following the rules of the Special Events Group?
The policies of the Board of Selectmen, yes.
Yes. And I make a rec, I make a motion that we accept their non-recommendation.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? I would just say one thing, if in fact, if the board does choose not to approve this, that you really go back to the working group and see if you can come up with another location, because I'm getting the sense that, that the selectmen are very concerned about it. They're very much supportive to the Marine Corps, the work they do, but the safety of not only the people collecting, but the people donating. So, I'll call for a vote.
And also, the Special Events Group is adhering to the policy that we've created in July, June, July, and August. And so, potentially outside of those ones, the recommendation could be more supportive.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, the motion carries, and unanimously.
But I do hope you approach the Events Committee, and let's see if we can't find that opportunity. Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes, okay, let's move on. Next, we have public hearings. And the first is a wetland hearing, it's an application for proposed beach nourishment. I'll read the public notice. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section Two Forty Seventy-Seven Wetland Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on June, it's today, June ninth, at seven P.M. in the Selectmen's Meeting Room Town Hall on the application of Mullen, Inc. for permission for a proposed beach nourishment to restore Sandy Beach at the Tides Motel located at Two Sixty-seven Clinton Avenue, Falmouth, Mass. Area affected is Vineyard Sound.
Madam Chair, just to remind you that this was on June second, and we continued with you, so that's the new one, Dave.
Yes, and thank you for coming back
You're welcome.
the next week. And this is the application to, for beach nourishment, and if you just give us your name for the record and proceed with your presentation.
All right, my name is Leslie Fields with the Woods Hole Group, here representing the owners of the Tide Motel.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may disclose that I know Leslie Field from her association with our scout troop, she and her sons have participated in many outings that I have led, but she's not related to me by family or by employment.
Good, thank you for that. Okay, Leslie.
I have four copies of the plans, I, I didn't realize I was supposed to
Yes.
one for everybody, but I'm hoping that you can share amongst these four copies.
I have one, so the others, you can give those to the other members.
All right, so, as I said, I work with the Woods Hole Group, I'm representing the owners of the Tides Motel. Also in the audience is the property manager, Dean Barry, for the Tides Motel. If there are any questions, I'm sure Dean would be happy to, to answer questions after I'm done. But we are here requesting a selectmen's permit to place six hundred cubic yards of beach-compatible sand on the Tides Motel beach. The beach has become increasingly rocky over the last few years, and starting about two or three years ago, the town changed their practices for disposal of material that's dredged at the entrance, from the entrance to Falmouth Inner Harbor. They used to dredge it from the inner harbor and place it on the town parcel immediately to the east of the inner harbor. And, as I said, about two or three years ago, they changed those operations, they started pumping it up drift to Neuro Surf Drive Beach, because that beach also needed some sand, and it's a public beach. So, as a consequence, the beaches down drift have become starved of sand, and they've become increasingly rocky over the years. So, that's sort of why we are requesting this. I know that the Yacht Club has also been placing sand on the adjacent property, I think they've done that twice over the last couple of years. You can see the pictures of the beach, here's the rocky beach now, the way it looks now, here's the way it used to look a couple of years ago when the town was pumping that material from the inner harbor, and just, just some other pictures here, more rocky beach. So, what we're proposing to do is place six hundred cubic yards of beach-compatible sand right in front of the Tides Motel in the area that's shaded on the plan. We'll be starting right in front of the concrete patio, it's on the seaward side of the Tides Motel, about half a foot below the elevation of that patio, extend out horizontally fifteen to twenty feet, and then slope down six to one until we hit mean-high water. No sand will be placed below mean-high water. The material this year is gonna be trucked in, so brought from off-site, and our access point is to come down Clinton Avenue, and we're hoping to be able to come through the town's parking lot, which is right to the east of the inner harbor, and dump the material over the jersey barriers, which separate the parking lot from the beach, the town's parking lot from the town's beach there. We'll bring a front-end loader onto the beach to spread the material according to the design, and then when we're done, we'll plant some beach grass on the seaward face of the dune, regrade the area where the access is, and pull out of the site. We're hoping to be able to do everything the week before July fourth. It'll really only take about one day to construct, so that's, that's about as long as we'll be in the town's parking lot. And that's, that's really all I have. If there's questions, I'm happy to answer questions.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I, yes.
Is there any provision, if there's any damage to the town parking lot, a bond or anything?
We haven't talked about that, that is sometimes done on bigger projects. I don't anticipate any sort of damage, it's only gonna be four large dump trucks full of sand, so I don't really anticipate there being any sort of damage to the parking lot.
I'd like to point out that the Waterways Committee voted against this, against this. Let's see, I'm just gonna try and read here. They, they're concerned, they reviewed the project and voted not to recommend it as planned. They were concerned with the amount of truck traffic this would generate in a very crowded area the last week of June, and said they recommended that the applicants seek permission to use the east side of their property for beach access. Could you point out which would be the east side of the property, if you would? Jeff, thank you, take the microphone. You know the girl.
Sure, yeah. So, the east side is right here, so it's between the Tides Motel and the Yacht Club property. There is a bigger dune in that area, that's one reason why we chose not to go over that, through that area, plus, as you see, the property line, really, we'd have to, we'd have to be on the Yacht Club property in order to use that side of the property for access.
You'd have to be on their property.
We would, yes, and we would have more destruction to the dune. I think maybe the Waterways Committee didn't quite understand the number of trucks that we were gonna be bringing, you know, that would be required for the project. We didn't really have an opportunity to go before them and discuss it, we just sent them a letter, and in retrospect, I probably should have gone to the meeting and given them a better description of what was going on.
And what is the date that you expect to do this again?
It's the week before July fourth, so it's the last week of June, and I don't have a specific day in there yet, but it's one of the days that last week of June.
That's the other objection they had, that it was being done at the end of June when the, when there are a lot of people here for Fourth of July weekend, and that area of town will be very crowded. Is there any other time you could do it?
Well, if we can get the
Is it because of when the spoils are being removed?
No, there's no spoil, this is being trucked in from off-site, so it has nothing to do with dredging this year. If we can get the contractor lined up and in place, we might be able to do it earlier, but I, I don't, I don't know for sure. And I do know that from speaking with Dean, the property manager, he says that that parking lot is not busy at all the week before July fourth.
What do you mean by the week? July fourth is a Friday, so you're talking about actually
I'm sorry, last week of June, we're talking about.
So, the latest date would be the twenty-seventh of June?
Yes. I'm sorry, yeah. So, I really don't think there would be a disruption to the people that are using the parking lot there with the, with the, you know, few number of trucks that are there and the week that we're doing it.
The other piece to this is that the, that the state requires that any time that dredge material is provided to, is this coming from a public area, the dredge material?
No, no, they're purchasing it from a
Oh, you're purchasing the dredge material?
Correct, yes.
Oh, okay, I think that's a little different, that if it were from a public area, if, if the materials were being dredged from a public area, then the state would want the, would want the entity that's doing this to provide public access
Correct.
to that beach, but you're not doing that.
Right, and we're not going below mean-high water, so that provision kicks in only when the sand's placed below mean-high water.
All right, let's, you have another question?
Yep. Any predictions as to where the sand's gonna end up?
Further down to the east.
I mean, it's not gonna be here very long.
Well, hopefully it'll be here during the summer, and that's the intent, really.
But is it then gonna end up being sand that we are then dredging out of the next inlet?
I mean, is it No, 'cause, I mean, it would, it would nourish the heights, yeah.
I'm sure you understand this much better than I do, but
Yeah, it would nourish the Heights area, and, you know, that, that big bluff there really has no beach at all, so if, if we gradually feed that beach with some sand, that's great, because it really needs it. So, there's not another inlet for, I guess that's Little, Little Pond is the next one, and that is dredge, but I think it would take a long time for it to get down there.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would wish to speak? Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would wish to speak, uh, in favor of this project? Is there anyone that'd like to speak against the project? Ms. Hayward, did you want to say something?
Nancy Hayward, I simply wanted to ask a question.
Sure.
Of, through you, Madam Chairman. I thought there used to be a lot of discussion of grain size and compatibility when one nourished a beach.
Thank you. Dr. Gladfelter, can you come to the microphone, please?
Leslie had to answer this question in front of the Conservation Commission, so I'll let her answer it again.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that's a very good question, I'm glad you asked. It is important to get sand that's compatible with what's on the beach, it helps, um, the sand, um, stay there longer and retain longer on the beach, and so, we can do a grain size analysis from the, the source material and one from the beach and show that they're compatible. If the Board of Selectmen wants us to do that, we can do that.
Yes, we do have in our, in our packet here, the approval by the, by the Conservation Commission.
Right.
They bought, in fact, that's why it was delayed a week, because the, the Conservation Commission had to hear it this past week, and they approved the project, I might want to add. Yes, Becky?
Is it possible to have it a week earlier? I mean, is that something that you can look into?
I will definitely look into it. We, we have quotes already from the contractors, so it's just a matter right now of selecting one and then scheduling it, so we can certainly ask them if we can get it done a week earlier. I can't promise.
No, no, but-
But I can certainly push for it.
Sue, and then Sam.
Okay, is it possible to get insurance to benefit the town if there is any property damage to the parking lot, or if any pedestrian is, you know, if it's a crowded beach day? And is it, the second question, is it possible to have safety officers there just to move people away from the trucks so that they have a clear path onto their beach?
In terms of the insurance, I know that the contractors carry liability insurance, we can get them to provide a, um, a certificate of insurance-
Okay.
-if the Board of Selectmen would like. And, um, I don't know how I would go about getting a safety officer, you mean from the police department, or just somebody from the contractor's company that could help direct tra- I don't know how to do that.
I think Heather Harper can respond to that. Heather?
Well, I was going to mention on the insurance issue that just if the policy could name the town of Falmouth as an additional insurer, that would cover-
Okay, okay, sure.
Dean Barry from the Tides Motel, we'd be happy to hire an officer for detail for the day if that, if that makes everybody happy, so.
I think it probably would. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this project?
I would love to hear from Dr. Gladfelter as to, we did not originally have that letter in the Concom, and if we could just find out what their questions and what their feeling about it was, I'd love to have that for the public record.
This is, I'm, I'm actually, Leslie avoided the, the problem, but I, I'm going to talk about the issue. You see this as a cobble beach? This is what you would normally have in this place, is a cobble beach because it's a high-energy beach. But, as Leslie pointed out, when you nourish the beaches, and in this case, the beaches to the east, the sand, there's a, there's an eddy around the jetty that comes out from the harbor, and it'll tuck back into that beach. But if you don't have the sand on the public beach, or the Yacht Club beach, which we haven't had, then you've lost that source. So, what they want to do is put sand, so it's a sand beach. This is a beach now, but it's a, it's a cobble beach, that's what it normally is. But most people don't want to put their blankets on a cobble beach. And putting sand into the system, it will wash out. Maybe not if you're lucky, maybe not in the storms in the next year, but it will wash out into the system and will end up nourishing beaches, it'll get forced out and down to the east. So, I, I mean, I can't really speak for or against a project like this, we approved the project, but if I can take off my Concom hat, I think this is a very reasonable project for a, for a, you know, business here in Falmouth.
Sam?
I, I guess, I share Sue's concern about, um, the impact of the dump trucks, and I don't know how heavy they are, because we know dump trucks can be pretty large and pretty heavy, but, I mean, there is a retaining wall there for the harbor, and I would just, would hope that we could at least get the town engineer to take a look at it, make sure that that can bear that kind of weight, uh, in order to be able to dump it over those, uh, jersey barriers, uh, for you to move it around. So I'm, I'm just concerned about the wear-bearing ability of that asphalt right there in that parking area. So, if, if I were going to approve this, I would want to do it contingent upon getting at least a, a green light from Peter McConney or one of the people.
Yeah, that's fine, can I, I'd be happy to meet Peter down there if that's, so I just give him a call and ask him to meet me down there, is that how that works?
We'll contact Peter if that's the desire of the board and ask him to get in touch.
Okay.
Can I just say, I understand that we're, we're facing a short-term deadline here, so we held this up until the 23rd, it probably might not be able to happen, so I don't want to make this a, you know, a stone wall.
Well, we can prove it with the conditions.
With the conditions, exactly.
All right, sure.
That's, yes.
I think that a negative, uh, vote on this, um, also, uh, would go against the Tides Motel, because it is our one B, one motel that is on the beach. And I do think that people come, and maybe it isn't so much that they want to sit on the beach, but I believe they would rather see the sand and walk through the sand. The other part about what section, when you get to the Yacht Club area, I don't know where the town property is, because I thought the Tides property came up and met the Yacht Club property. And there wasn't a town property right in that area. Well, I'm looking right here, so I'm saying that in the area, if it ends with, comes up with Tides and then it starts with the Yacht Club, and then it goes town.
The, here's, here's the base of the jetty over here, so the harbor's right here, and then there's a small sliver of town property.
Oh, it's on this side?
And that's pretty heavily, yeah, it's pretty heavily used, believe it or not. People come down there and use that beach in the summer. And then there's the Tides Motel and then the Yacht Club.
Okay.
And this is the beach that the town has nursed in the past with dredge spoils from the Inner Harbor. And then it just moves on this way, or it did move that way.
It's a very popular area for many residents of Falmouth. And the motel is a very popular place for people to come, so I understand, so it would want to be kept up to standard. I understand that.
If there are no more questions to the applicant, I would ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Move that we close the hearing?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No, the vote is, the vote, the motion carries. So now, the board will deliberate on, uh, on, on a motion. Whoever make, whoever might like to make a motion on this project, Sam?
I move that we, I guess, approve this project contingent upon receiving, um, you know, an acceptable ruling from our town engineer on whether the parking lot can bear the load of the sand trucks that are going to be coming in.
And the, and the, um, oh, and also that they include the town of Falmouth on their, on the insurance policy, so that we're covered.
Yes, thank you.
And hire a police detail.
I'll second that.
And that they notify us when the actual date is, so that we know when this is going to take place, and also that you hire a public safety officer during the project. And this is a plan dated May 1st, 2014, so that will all be included in the motion. Carolyn, did you get all that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, uh, well, it's too late, because, unless you want to provide us with-
Plan date is the 13th.
Oh, it's a-
May 13th.
Oh, down here, so, thank you. The plan date is May 13th, not May 1st. All right, so, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, the motion carries, thank you very much. And, why don't we just send that down for a signature?
All these things, okay.
Yeah, these are, these are all to the side, but we have more. Okay, next we have another public hearing. And this is an application for an all-alcoholic package store license from Three Way Enterprises Inc., and I will read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given under chapter 138 of the general laws as amended, that MZ Enterprises Inc., doing business as Falmouth Food Mart and Liquor, has applied for a transfer of ownership of an all-alcoholic package store license located at 414 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. Hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, June 9th. And for the applicant, yes. Oh, great, thank you. From, up, for the loan amount. Very good, thank you. Pass these down. I'll pass these documents down in case you want to just review them. Okay, well, will you address it in your speaker, thank you.
My name is Ben Lasorda, I'm representing MZ Enterprises. The principals of MZ Enterprises are Zahid Rashid, right here, and Mr. Migmah Sherpa. They're each 50% stockholders in MZ Enterprises. And what we're looking for today is, is approval of the transfer of the all-alcoholic package store license held by Three Way Enterprises, doing business as Three Way Liquors, to MZ Enterprises. In addition, we're seeking a approval of a pledge of the license to Rockland Trust Company in order to secure a loan of $140,000. Since we applied, we've received approval, and I have a copy of the approval that I passed out to the board. The only other, uh, issue we have outstanding is, uh, the application requires a copy of the lease, uh, the, the Lasorda is Rodriguez, is, uh, Rodriguez Realty Trust, and I guess they're having a little bit of internal conflict. And, uh, we haven't been able to get anything from them until today, when they gave us a proposed lease. The interest, I believe, of the, of the board and of the Alcoholic Beverages Commission, Patrol Commission, is that whether the landlord is going to be an interested party. If the landlord gets a percentage of the sales, then they, they have to be listed and investigated, uh, as if they were an applicant. However, the proposed lease is fixed, it's a fixed monthly payment, there's no contribution from sales. But that's, until now, that's, that's where we are with the lease, we still don't have a signed lease with the landlord. Mr. Rashid is the owner of Falmouth Food Mart, and he's been in town for 21 years as the owner of that establishment. That establishment, it doesn't have a liquor license, but it does have a tobacco license, and my understanding is there's been no issues, uh, with that particular establishment. In addition, Mr. Rashid does have an interest in two liquor licenses now. He has a, a, an annual, I'm sorry, a seasonal beer and wine, package store licenses and sandwich, at the Sandwich Food Mart. He's owned that property for 10 years, or in that business for 10 years, has had no alcohol, no problems at all, no, no disciplinary actions taken by the Board of Selectmen of Falmouth. For the last two years, he's been the owner of C Street Food Market in Hyannis, which holds a, an annual, uh, beer and wine package store license. Uh, Mr. Sherpa, uh, is half-owner of this company, and he's going to be the manager. The reason being is, uh, Mr. Rashid is already on a liquor license as the manager. However, uh, Mr. Rashid has taken Mr. Sherpa through training at the C Street, he's been down there for over a month. Uh, and on May 20th, uh, Mr. Sherpa attended the Municipal Police, uh, Serving Course, they, they have a, an annual, uh, course for servers for, for a day, and, uh, Mr. Sherpa went to that course as well. Uh, he's, he's signed up for the tips course as well, and we'll have that certificate in the next day or two. Uh, Mr. Rashid, I'm sorry, Mr. Sherpa has been working for the last six years at the, at the Falmouth Food Mart, he's been the manager of the Falmouth Food Mart and responsible for the tobacco sales. Several items, uh, let's see. Yeah, I should also mention that, uh, Mr. Sherpa just became a citizen this year, he's been in the country for eight years, and, uh, he just received his naturalization paper several months ago. They plan to run the business exactly as it is, there's not going to be any renovations, same hours, the hours, I believe, are from 8:00 to 11:00 on weekdays, and from noon to 11:00 on Sundays. The board has any questions? Both gentlemen are here and I can answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? The attorney or Mr. Sherpa? Yes?
No, no, I, I just, I wanted to ask how many more licenses we have available, liquor licenses, that's what's my-
No, this is a transfer, so it's not a new license.
I believe the, DiMartino's has held this license for about 50 years.
Yes.
Mr. DiMartino died last year, I understand, and so it's time, there's going to be new ownership, one way or the other.
I don't think we have any more, though.
No, I agree with that. No, but being a transfer, it's, it's the same establishment, just new ownership.
I have a question. Do you know, under what provision, the board would have authority to approve this, subject to receiving the signed lease, as is the requirement?
I think the, the signed lease is, it seems to be a requirement of the ABCC. In other words, they want to see the lease, and so I would imagine that before, the ABCC will approve it. And their, their process has taken about a month and a half now, I believe, they're going to want to see that signed lease. Once again, it's-
That's correct, they won't approve it with their signed lease.
Right, they won't. Yeah, so it's, and of course, nothing's final. My clients are well aware that you don't operate a liquor store until you own, and so there's not going to be any, any, uh, we're not going to be in there until that license is issued, that's, that's not, can't do those things anymore.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, we've done our best, and we've been trying to negotiate a lease for a month and a half, and we finally got something from them today, and, you know, it's kind of disheartening to try to work through, but I understand they're working out their personnel orders between the different members of the family, and, uh, so finally they got us something for today.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this license? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the license? No? Then, uh, take a motion to close the hearing?
I move we close the hearing, and this transfer?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries, yes?
Madam Chair, if I could just note for the record, the board does have a copy of, uh, a report from the police department, um, on this premises, and, uh, I appreciate Chief Dunn being in attendance as well, in the event that the board would have any questions.
This is the next one. This is the next one.
This is the next license, I think. This is, um, Gifford Street, we're on East Falmouth.
There's an appropriate gory, so it's going to take one.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, so, does the board have any, is there a motion?
I would move approval of the transfer of the all-alcoholic package store license from Three Way Enterprises to MZ Enterprises.
For the hours of 11:00, 8:00, um- And- And noon to 11:00 on Sundays.
Is it 11:00 on Sundays? I thought it was 9:00 on Sundays, is this 11:00?
No, 11:00 PM at night? No, it's actually 1:00, you can go to 1:00. Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, I think we need a vote on the pledge as well.
Oh, all right, then we'll take a separate vote on the pledge of the license. They are pledging the license to, for Rockland Trust, so a motion to approve the pledge of the license.
Would you just explain a little more what it means when we vote for a pledge?
It means that, um, they are borrowing money from the Rockland Trust and they're using as collateral the, um, the license itself. And it's customary that, that banks will do that if they're asked and if they review it, the request and approve it. So if the bank has approved it, we just received the letter from Rockland Trust that they do approve the pledge, but we have to vote, that we also agree with the pledge.
And then, if, if all of the obligations of the bank, if something happens that that doesn't, you know, they haven't met all their obligations to the bank, what happens then to the license?
Well, they, uh, we would revoke the license.
I see.
Probably, most likely, that would be our option.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So where are we, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I just, I guess I need, I didn't look carefully at the paperwork. I didn't, I didn't see anything about the pledge, right there.
Yeah, it's collateral. He just provided that it's.
I'm just trying to remember exactly what the wording on this on the pledge.
It would be in the loan docs, we don't have that.
Are we not?
We don't have the commitment, so it's only going to be those right here.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm not sure what the appropriate motion is on the pledge. Are we not authorizing the use of the liquor license as collateral to Rockland Trust?
We approve their, their request to, to the bank to pledge the license.
I saw a move.
It's just not the first one we've done.
No, no, I understand what it's all about.
All right, we have a motion and a second, right? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Good luck. Yes, thank you.
I just need to go into your paperwork.
Yeah. Let's see. Hold on just a minute. I get all the paperwork from here. I guess that's going to have to go in the signature. All right, we have another, another application for a new all-alcoholic common vixxular license and entertainment license at Jack's Restaurant and Bar, Inc., at 327 Gifford Street. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the general laws as amended that Jack's Restaurant and Bar, Inc., doing business as Jack's Restaurant and Bar, has applied for a new all-alcoholic common vixxular license to be exercised at 327 Gifford Street, Falmouth, Mass. The applicant has also applied for an entertainment license. Hearing will be held in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, July 9th, at 7:00 p.m. on the above application. And you are here, Mr. Lepris, to speak for the applicant?
Good evening. Yes, I am. My name is Christopher Lepris. I'm an attorney here in town, 99 Town Hall Square, and I'm here tonight representing the corporation, seeking the license, but the principal behind the corporation is also standing here with me, John Sorgi, affectionately known as Jack Sorgi. This property has been a restaurant pub license establishment, probably longer than anybody in the world can remember. Growing up, when I was growing up, we, it was known as the Grassmere Pub. It was run by George Ferrera. It has apparently changed hands a couple of times since then, but for the longest period of time, Mr. Ferrera ran it. He actually called me today, and he wanted me to convey to the board that he's in support of this application as well. He actually owns a budding property, but he no longer owns the property before, before the board tonight. This particular property has about a quarter of an acre. As I said, the application, the applicant is a corporation, but Jack Sorgi is the, is the principal behind it. He is seeking a, a full year, year-round, all-alcohol, all-alcoholic license. He is going to answer any questions that you have tonight, but I will tell you, and I've been in the, I've been in this establishment several times, it's more restaurant than it is bar, no question about that. It's a, it's a dining establishment first, that happens to have a bar as well. He is seeking entertainment, some easy light listening music. By way of other specifics, before we get to Jack himself, he's indicated that he'd like to have a 1:00 a.m. close, but he doesn't always expect to be open as late, and of course, that would be as business permits. Jack himself is age 59. He has been in food and beverage since age 14. When I first met Jack, he was managing over at Paul's Pizza, where he was for many, many years. I want to say 12, 12 years. 35 years here in Falmouth, he's managed Papageno's. He's had alcoholic licenses, not owned by him, but he's been the name manager on, on licenses in the past. He's originally from, originally from Braintree. If you go down to the location at 327 Gifford Street, you will see, relatively speaking, something that you've seen there for years and years and years, a restaurant with a pub atmosphere, a bar atmosphere, and that's what Jack intends to do. He left the employ of Paul's Pizza a years, a year or more ago, and he took a chance. He's run out, and he's put some money together, and he is trying to make a goal in our community, and I hope the board could appreciate it, that he needs your help, and he certainly needs the help of others in the community to make this business work. It's not easy out there these days, it really isn't. So with that, I'm going to ask Jack if he might come up to the microphone and tell you a little bit more about himself. I'm going to answer any questions you might have. We are looking for a license so he can serve alcohol with meals for people at the bar, and that's what we do, okay?
I, I would like to say that his application states the hours as 10:00 to midnight, not 1:00.
Well, I'm sorry, my, my correction then, 10:00 to midnight, I'm sorry, 10:00 to midnight it is. I made a mistake here on my.
Let me just be entertainment, entertainment license.
My right check.
No? Common vixxular license, the entertainment license. Yeah, it's all 10:00 to midnight.
So that's what the times are, except that.
Yeah, if you want a change of hours, I think you'd have to come back at another time, just for change of hours. I just wanted to be clear, because once it's on the paper, we.
No, I, I understand.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sorgi.
Jack, why don't you just tell the board a little bit about yourself and what you're supposed to do for the property and so on and so forth?
Yes, I've been in the restaurant business since I was 14, started McDonald's in Braintree when I started, when I first opened. I've been living here in Falmouth now for 35 years. I have four children, went through all the public schools. My wife's working Suzanne, of 37 years. I just looking for an opportunity to go into business for myself. I'm trying to provide Falmouth a restaurant that's, we've done it nicely over inside and stuff, putting the rugs down and stuff. I'm trying to get Falmouth a, a nice restaurant for everyone to attend to. It's, it's not a high, high-scale restaurant. I feel maybe it's above like the 99s, something to go to. Mostly all the check items will be under $20, and have entertainment nightly for people coming, easy listening entertainment, to give something, because somebody wants to go on a Wednesday night, and they can listen to someone sitting there playing the guitar. Through the years working with Papageno's at the Falmouth Mall, I donated thousands of dollars in food products, gift certificates, coupons to all the public people in Falmouth, as well as the public schools. I've donated so many things to the VIPS. I actually got a plaque from VIPS, we donated so much to them. I've donated to pizza parties for schools, the pizzas for the, the fire department in October, when they have the open house. So I've done a lot. I've done for the key clubs. I just, I've done a lot in Falmouth. I've never had a problem with the alcohol services that I provided, whether it's 25 years with, 22 years here, even 25 years with Papageno's, and also 12 years at Paul's Pizza.
So what kind of a menu are we going to have?
I actually have a copy of it, if anyone wants to take a look at.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Pass it around.
Sure, I can start here. One second. Okay. I'll go back over here. But I could just advertise, entrees, salads, seafood, steak, chicken, pasta, burgers and sandwiches. Yeah, it's a very nice menu. I, I try, we have a lot of specialty things that you won't find in other restaurants. We try and make it a little bit different, you know, so people say, you know, what do you want to go for a burger? We can go here, there, everywhere, but this person's wife or husband might say, well, Jack's has this, I want to get that, and you can get your burger there. So I'm trying to do it like that, to keep it, you know, to a nice restaurant.
Does the board have questions, or Mr. Sorgi?
I would hope that you would talk a little bit about what's been happening the past month. As someone who's been in charge of a liquor license before and worked at restaurants, to not follow what the rules are in this town and being open when you weren't allowed to, concerns me greatly as to how we're going to.
Well, okay, I'm gonna just take a step back.
Maybe I could, maybe I can try that. Mr. Sorgi purchased the property from the prior owner who had a license, and had a, has an understanding that that person was staying on, managing the property, and was under the impression it was okay what he had been doing. And initially, the plan was actually to have a transfer, not a new license. Would have been the existing license with that same manager there. For a number of reasons that I don't think we need to get into tonight, we, we changed the plan from a transfer to a new license. I will say this, there was some conflicting information coming back to Mr. Sorgi. You know, the paperwork hadn't filed over at Town Hall, and I think a mistake was made, and it made, nothing intentional, but there was a suggestion, yeah, you're okay, you know, it's pending, and the prior, you know, the prior owner was there, and it was relatively informal. But in hindsight, when, when the problem concretely was brought to Mr. Sorgi's attention, there's a problem, he shut it right down. He did. And he consulted with me, I had conversations with the police, I know Chief Dunn is here tonight, but when we were concretely made aware that the town had concerns, he shut it right down. He was not operating for a number of days, and, you know, he's in a situation where he's paying a lease, and he's not getting any revenue, and it was a real problem for him. My experience over the years has been, people getting licenses have, they've been operating on prior owners' licenses, and I, you know, whether that's correct or incorrect, that's what was going on here. And if, in fact, the town is offended in any way, I'll take the hit for it, and, and we're very sorry. But when he was concretely told, you have to shut it down until the hearing, that's exactly what he did.
And I guess that's my concern, is that our expectation is that a license holder or a restaurateur actually knows the rules, doesn't have to be told, oh, no, you can't do that. I mean, to say, oh, I didn't know, when you've been in the business for so many years, is why I have a little bit of a concern.
Well, it was, it was wrong. I, I can't say it any other way. We are apologizing. I can tell you, at Town Hall, he was told by several people here, you're okay, you know, the application's in and is pending, and the other owner's there. That doesn't make it right, but it's an explanation, not an excuse. But he was wrong, and I, I can tell you, only because I, I know Jack, if anybody else knows Jack, he wasn't thinking he was doing anything wrong at the time. As it turns out, he was, but in the law, we call it culpability or mens rea. Attorney Moran knows that. He didn't know he was doing anything wrong, and we had conversations about it. Bear in mind, the other owner with the license is on site and was working with him. That was the issue.
Chief, did you want to make any comments?
Did you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for the chief? No, I think your summary was pretty clear.
It was.
Yeah. Sam?
I have, I just, I have a question about, do your bartenders and people that are serving the alcoholic beverages, are they adequately trained and certified?
They are. I have tips. I brought some copies of the tips.
Certifications?
Certifications with me, but I believe I have to turn them to Selectman's Office as well, when I pick up the license. I do have the tip certifications.
Does anyone in the, would anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this license? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the license?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
It's been suggested that one or more unnamed individuals at Town Hall somehow suggested that certain procedures in operation were appropriate, and I'd be remiss if I didn't confirm that we have some well-qualified and highly conscientious people here at Town Hall that are extremely careful about what they say and do, because they know about the seriousness, not only of the vixxular's license, but of the all-alcohol licenses as well. And, and I know the board is, certainly the members of the board that have had the pleasure to work with them for some time recognize that, but I do, do want to confirm that their caution, and I think the, you know, report from the Police Department, you know, indicates some circumstances there that predate this current license, and have to do with some confusion about names and menus and things of that nature. So I just want to be careful not to allow suggestion that an unnamed town employee somehow suggested that operating in a manner that might be questionable is somehow agreeable, and that they would do that in any, any kind of misleading way. Again, I know they have considerable experience and training and are extremely cautious, and I just do want to underscore that.
Thank you.
I mean, I do know, remember driving by, I think in December, seeing the sign, a new restaurant sign being put up, before I knew we had approved or seen any kind of license. Have we been, it sounded like we'd been advertising for quite a while before you, this license even.
Well, again, I just, I think I was inadvertently maybe misinformed, I, this is the first time I'm actually getting into a business myself. I went, I talked to Selectman's Office about transferring the license. I was told, if I wanted to wait to the end, to the first of the year and do it then, because it's not prorated. I was, I went to the building department and followed all procedures for getting a sign, told them what I was doing, and they gave me, I went to the sign committee, they approved the sign, they said, there you go, you can put your sign up, good luck. So I thought I was following all protocol. I put the sign up, and then I found out that I was missing a, a piece of information from the building department, so I went down there, and then they said, have you transferred your license? I said, no, I was going to wait to the end of the year, to try and transfer it by the end of the year. They said, okay, well, you can't, you have to cover your sign up, which I did. And that's why the sign was covered. Everybody thought, you know, that's why the sign was covered, and I put the old 327 back up on the roof, because that's why I thought I had to do, and that's, and that's what I did. I mean, as far as knowing how to open a business, no. I wish there was a book or something, like someone could come to the Town Hall and get, hey, A through Z, you know, maybe I should have, did it a different way, yes, I apologize, I went the wrong way about it. But as far as knowing about serving alcohol, making sure people aren't over-served, I work 70, 80 hours a week, even my age, to ensure that people are properly served and not over-served. You know, we have people coming in, and they say to me, you know, well, we're not, we're not, we walked over here, and if they're intoxicated, we still not going to serve them, because who knows, they could walk back home, get in their car and go somewhere. So we're very, you know, as far as alcohol licenses, I'm very aware of those rules in law, from being general manager and training general manager, and one of the top guys for years, also working at Paul's Pizza to handle any problems or issues that may have come. Am I a bad businessperson for not following, trying to figure out what to do first? Yes. That makes some, I don't know what type of mistakes, yes. That I shouldn't, we learn by them, could I write a book? Yes, I could. And again, if I did any wrongdoing, insulted anybody, the town or any boards, I apologize, it wasn't intentional, nothing.
Well, let me just say that you don't operate a restaurant until you own it, and you don't serve liquor until you have a license in your hand.
Right.
I mean, those are pretty basic.
Well, we were.
And I know you, there was a previous owner there.
Right, which stayed on with me, and we were going to do a transfer.
Well, but that doesn't work if you own the restaurant.
Right. Well, I hadn't owned it yet.
Yeah.
Or in the transition.
Okay, so you have a question for the chief?
For the chief, I do.
Yeah, question.
And I, I had seen the summary investigation report, but I'm not sure I have the results of the quarry.
I don't have it with me either. I wouldn't have submitted it for later.
Does any issue come to mind?
Not to mind, no.
Or any other relevant investigation, other than the, the one?
Other than no one's presented to you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant, for his attorney?
I guess I will harp on one more. I really wish you had started out saying, and concerning what happened this past month, let me tell you what happened.
Oh.
But the fact that we had to bring it up again, I would have loved, I mean, we had a silly issue last week with a liquor license on the farmers market, where the gentleman immediately came and apologized for what had happened, laid it right out in front, but to, you know, sort of make us drag out the mud. I wish you would, I mean, it's over now, but I really wish you.
I did apologize, I mean, apologized right off the top. I thought I did. I thought I did apologize.
There was no, by you, there was no mention of these incidents until I asked the question.
I was, I was out of town all day today. Normally, I get, I get here earlier in the day, and I look at the file. I wasn't aware the report was in the file, to be quite, quite honest with you. I was aware of what you're referring to, however, and I clearly thought we had dealt with that, because we had been in touch with the Police Department. I had several conversations with the police, and I want you to know, it was, as soon as, I never spoke with the chief, but I can tell you, I spoke with, I believe it was Officer Reed, at least a couple of times. We had very cordial, very pleasant conversations about what to do and what, what not to do. And we came over here, and we, we had conversations with the Selectman's staff, and we, we shut it down to make sure, when we, when we came, when we concretely knew there was a problem, we stopped. You'll note that, I want the board to know, the lease itself was only fairly recently entered into. It was a process where he went into the business, initially with the fella, it was, he was buying to take it over, but it was a painstaking negotiation with landlord to get it to a point where he could even get a lease signed and get it to you for the application. There is some gray area here, or maybe not even so gray, I can see Mr. Jones. When he put up the signed Jax initially, he obviously put it up thinking there wasn't a problem, because if he thought there was a problem, he wouldn't have put it up. And when it was brought to his attention, it is a problem, he covered it up. And he was operating under the books of the prior business with an eye towards buying it. I've seen other transactions go through it a very similar way, but it's usually a license transfer, not a new license. Other issues came up, which required him to go this route. So I will say this, we were wrong, and if you, if you didn't like the apology the first time around, let me really emphasize it this time around.
It was not the lack of apology, it was merely that, for this issue, for us not to bring up this issue, or for you to bring it up, we've been remiss.
I was not aware that the report was in, and the severity of your concern. I certainly knew of the incident, and I spoke with the police, and we shut it down. But I, well, we're here, obviously, dealing with it right now. Like I said, I was out of town all day today, I just made it back, and well, seven o'clock tonight to get over here, I was out of Connecticut.
It was something even before I read the report, that I noticed the place was running, I noticed it was then shut down, it was running. It was something that I think this town probably already was.
Mr. Sorgie, can I say this, and I appreciate Mr. Sorgie's point that he made earlier. He was getting conflicting information. He was talking with people at the Building Department, he was talking with the police, he was talking with people in the Selectman's Office, well, if you do this, or you do that, you're all set, and then if you, you open it, but you don't serve alcohol, and there was some confusion. We finally contacted the police, who made it very clear what had to be done, and he shut it down at that particular time. I can, I can assure you, he didn't go into this with an eye towards doing anything wrong. He truly didn't. I think he was naive, I think he could have done it better in hindsight. I certainly hope that the board can give him a second bite at the apple here, because he's a good man, he's never caused a problem in this town, he's managed properties all over this town, he's fully capable of holding a liquor license. He is, he's investing his life savings in this property to try to make a go of it for himself and his family. We just got the lease done, only a day or two before we even filed the application. So it's been a very difficult process, just to, just to stand before you here tonight.
So what is the status as of now? Is it, you're closed?
Yes, as soon as I found out about, I guess, I didn't even know about what you have there, but as soon as I found out that I couldn't sell alcohol, and I said, well, if I have, can't use that license, then the food is also on that license. So I said, I'm going to shut, and this is Tuesday, I didn't close Tuesday, Wednesday, and then I ended up closing, closing it down completely before Memorial Day weekend, because I felt it was the right thing to do, and I said, I'm not going to do the wrong, if this is wrong, unfortunately, I suffer, but if it's wrong, I got to shut, I shut down the entire restaurant and still close, is the right now.
Well, as of tonight, you will have, or tomorrow, you will have the common vicsular license.
Okay.
So you could serve food, but you still can't serve alcohol.
Right, I understand that.
Until, until the license is in your hand.
Right.
Okay, just so you know.
And I, I do appreciate the way it appears, but I think, once you communicate with Mr. Sorgie, and you hear what he has to say, he, he actually has a rational explanation. He was wrong, he was naive, and he made a mistake. But I don't think he went into this in any way, shape, or form trying to, trying to deceive anybody.
All right. Do you have a question?
I, I just think that in listening to you for the last several minutes, is the fact that each time there was an issue, there was an excuse. And then there was an apology. And then, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. And I think in listening to many restaurants and places that serve alcohol, I usually don't hear that. It's very clear-cut, everyone knows exactly what the rules are, how you follow them, and what you do. And you don't go into a business saying, well, I suppose it was okay. Or, I didn't know that. When, in my mind, when you want to have a restaurant, and I'm fully aware of all of the years of problems at that restaurant, is the fact that you take the responsibility, and you find out what you need to do, and you don't suppose that at some point, well, you know, the person that had the license, he's here, so I'll, I'll just serve liquor because I plan to, I plan to buy this. I'm having really a lot of difficulty about the responsibility of giving out a liquor license, when each answer has been, well, I didn't know that. Well, no one told me to do that. Well, someone gave me bad information. I am, I'm not in a good place with this, when, being a selectman, I voted for a lot of licenses. They're very clear-cut, they're professional, they're business, and I don't usually hear what I've heard here this evening. And all I need to find out is that if this is not a positive vote, what happens next as far as this restaurant and the liquor license?
Well, if the board doesn't vote to give him a license, he doesn't have a license, you know, he can't serve alcohol.
And then he returns, then it's another, another time, or that's it? This is, this is the vote?
You don't have to go to the ABCC if he wants to appeal it.
He can appeal it to the ABCC if we vote it down. But we have to have very good reasons to vote it down.
Okay.
Can I, can I try to address that? You speak to excuse after excuse after excuse, and I, I can tell by the tone of your voice, you're very serious about it. When it was brought to his attention, you're doing something wrong, he shut it down. There was some confusion. One incident, one set of circumstances that caused confusion, he shut it right down. He's managed other properties here in town for years and years and years, I don't believe ever caused a problem. There was some confusion here, one time, one time, and he shut it down, and he has apologized profusely here tonight. And I'll apologize for him. It's not as easy to start a restaurant as it might appear to you folks. I know you have the licensing responsibilities and whatnot. He went into this property, sort of trying to help out the prior owner, who was having all kinds of problems. In fact, I believe that license has since been, been turned in. It was going to be a transfer of a license, which would have meant, yes, that license was still there on the wall, and that other person was still continuing to operate. But when Mr. Sorgie came to me, we realized we couldn't do it that way. At the same, at the same time, there were issues with leases and, and a lot of difficulties. There, there've been some problems there at that site, well before Mr. Sorgie ever came in. It's my hope that somebody on the board looks to Mr. Sorgie as the solution to the problem, not the problem itself. Because he's a stable man, he's been in this town thirty-five years, and he's, he's been in business in food and beverage for thirty-nine years. I think you have the right guy. I'm sorry about what happened, and there, there was a problem of which we are taking, or trying to take responsibility at this very moment in time. I, I, I don't agree to the characterization it was a bunch of problems. I think it was one problem, and when we, when it was finally concretely identified, he shut it down. He's, he's leasing this property every month right now, with zero revenue coming in. He's, he's having a major problem right now, and we're, hopefully, the board will consider that in its deliberations, and, and accept our apology and our explanation. I, it, it was a mistake. If, if the mistake hadn't, hadn't been made, I don't think anybody would, would question that we have the right person here to go into this restaurant. And we are sorry, and I'm sorry.
I think that most of us know the history of 327 over a period of years, and we're continuously driving by it, and say it's a new owner, and it's got a new name, and it's a new menu, and we've kind of done that. But I would say, probably, I would vote for the license, because I do believe that if this could be a stable place, instead of a new name every other year, and, and different people doing licenses, is to give him a chance to make it stick and to make a good business out of it.
Sue, you had a question? Why wasn't it a transfer? Why exactly did you decide not to do the transfer and do a new license instead?
There was some, again, business reasons at that location prior to his involvement whatsoever, but they, they're sticking to the existing license, and we don't want to be privy. We don't want to own those issues with that license, when hopefully we get our own license.
So does that go into the issue of how many licenses?
No, this is just a pouring license. Oh, good, fine. The numbers deal with packing stores.
In my understanding, that other license has been turned in, in fact, so we're not adding to licenses.
It's not another, okay. It doesn't imply we're pouring license.
I would move, we close the hearings.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to close the hearing?
I'll close the hearing.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries. So now the board will deliberate on the, on the granting of this license. Yes?
As much as I share Rebecca's concern about how efficiently this was transacted, I guess I also feel for the employees. I mean, this is a business opportunity, it does employ Falmouth people, and I guess I'm inclined to forgive the, the missteps, if you will, and support it, because I do want to see this be a, an ongoing business that employs people from Falmouth and, and serves as a, a service to the people that use it as well.
What is the length of time it's going to take now, from this step to getting the liquor license and being open, generally?
It's up to the ABCC, and it's hard to say. Could be six weeks, it could be four weeks, could be two months. But because it's summer, hopefully, they will take pity on, take potters, and move it through fairly quickly. But we, we'll get our part done very quickly, and then the rest is up to the ABCC.
Ideally before the Fourth of July.
That would be nice. Okay, so the motion would come to, well, I'm going to listen for a motion. Who would care to make a motion?
I will make the motion. I will make the motion that we agree to the license for Jax Restaurant and Bar at 327 Gifford Street as a new license.
With the hours of ten AM to twelve to midnight?
It says ten.
Monday through Saturday?
Well, and Sunday's the same.
Yeah.
Ten AM to twelve AM.
Second?
Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your concern, and we will be doing the right thing from here on forward.
Thank you.
I'm going to believe you.
Well, you know we drive by there every day.
I'm going to come in for dinner now. Thank you so much.
Right, okay. Okay. And thank you, chief. All right, let's see. The next is an application for a new wine and malt common vicsular license at Ryan Family Amusement. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended, that Ryan Family Amusements, Inc. has applied for a new wine and malt liquor license to be located at 23 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Massachusetts. A hearing will be held in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, Monday, June ninth, 2014. Yes, for the applicant?
Yes, good evening. My name is Paul Tarniff, I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and I represent Ryan Family Amusements Incorporated. Do want to introduce a couple of people in the front row. At the end is Mike Crowley, who was the proposed manager, is also the secretary treasurer for the corporation, also a director and a shareholder. Seated next to him is Rob Nichols, who's the president of Ryan Family Amusements. And seated next to him is Paul Larry, who's the owner of the building, where the bowling facility is located, actually, see through the window over there. As you indicated, we have applied for an annual wine and malt liquor general on-premises license for the property, it's 23 Town Hall Square. I believe the application is complete and accurate, and we have submitted proof of the notice to the abiders just before the meeting started. First, with regard to Mr. Crowley, he is a U.S. citizen, presumably over the age of twenty-one, I believe, has no criminal record. As I indicated, he's an officer, director, and shareholder of the corporation, has worked in the family entertainment industry for the last forty-six years, is tips trained. The applicant intends to request the typical, typical hours for the license of this kind, namely between the hours of eleven and one, however, I don't believe they're ever open that long. I think we've submitted a detailed floor plan as part of the package.
Yes.
If you haven't been to the facility, take a view, I like to walk right down the road here, but if you've been in, it's actually quite ideal for this type of situation, where we have, you walk in, and there's the service desk, where you get your shoes and pay for your bowling. Bowling lanes to the right up toward Main Street, game room, this way, closer to this, this facility. So, there's a nice demarcation there, even though the general on-premises would allow alcohol anywhere, that's not what their intention is. You don't want it in the game room, don't want it in the bowling lanes for sure, or the seating where the electronic scoring happens. Just that area right in front of the control center there, where there's some seats and some tables for people to watch. And that's pretty much the only place we would want the alcohol to be served. We have a history of, in other of our facilities, we have several facilities on the Cape and Newport, and also off Cape, where we've done alcohol service, beer and wine only. Buzzards Bay, for example, Hyannis, Millis, Yarmouth, we have beer and wine. Yarmouth, we are in the process of moving to an all-alcohol, because we have a new, new type of facility there with a bigger center for bigger rooms rather than smaller cut-up rooms. So it's a little different, but it is the trend in the bowling industry. If you've been to other places, you've seen beautiful palaces, beautiful lounges, and more entertainment for television and that type of thing. So, it's still a family entertainment industry. That's exactly what we intend to keep it. It's for kids, but it's also for parents, they have a lot of leagues. The purpose of our request is that, we had a lot of our customers ask us if we could get that beer and wine license, and that they've enjoyed that in other places, including in Borne. Want to make sure you understand that the alcohol is not a deal-breaker here. It is not going to make us rich, okay? It's an amenity we offer to our patrons. I can tell you, in Buzzards Bay, it, it totals 2.3% of our gross income, 2.3%. In Hyannis and Millis, 7%. In Yarmouth, it's 16%, but we also have food service, full kitchen there with pizza service, what we cook on-site, and other types of activities, and other types of foods as well. So it's a little different there. But hopefully, she was here, no?
Just left.
We've had no problems in any of those locations. It has worked, and it is, there's systems in place, there's signage in place. We use translucent cups, we never handed a bottle or a can, it's always poured into a translucent cup, therefore, we can watch and monitor what's in that cup, and who's holding that cup. It's very easy to see, especially in this location, where everything's right out in front of you. So, it's worked well. We're not going to abandon the emphasis on family fun, with a couple of sales of beer and wine, that's not going to happen. I would like to introduce Rob Nichols, if I could. He would like to address more briefly, just about the common vicsular side of this thing. And then if, you know, Mr. Crowley's available, if you have any questions as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We would like to, to serve pretzels, popcorn, and pizza, and we'd like to, we have a contract with Papagino's right now for our, our birthday parties, that they provide the pizza for that. And this is what we'd like to do here at the bowling center. And we will have a pizza warmer, that when they deliver the pizzas, we'll have pizza on-site at all times. And then popcorn and pretzels, that we also serve at our other centers, that we have the beer and wine licenses at. And that's, that's pretty much the, the food end of it. We, I spoke with Scott McCann from the Health Department, and we looked at, we will be putting in a three-bay sink for in a three-bay sink for sanitation and a hand-washing sink that will be right in that area where the, where the draft beer and where the pretzels and popcorn and pizza will be served. And that's, that's pretty much it for right now.
I just want to know if a glass of wine is going to improve my bowling score?
It always does.
That's my, that's my question.
It always does.
I know, I wasn't too bad, was I? Becky?
Do you have a policy concerning children being dropped off by parents? That they're just dropped off and let them go in and bowl and they have their money and put their shoes on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, well, we don't have a policy like that. I mean, we do have that happen, not often, because a lot of times the parents do accompany the kids. Once in a while, we'll have a group that, that'll stop in, sometimes an organized group with the school or Recreation Department or something like that. But we do have children that are dropped off once in a while, so it's not like we say that they need to be supervised by adults, but our attendants are well-trained. And we don't want to be a babysitting service, but at the same time, it does happen quite often that there could be some teenagers in there that are on their own without adult supervision.
Okay, I'm just thinking about the fact that you're going to introduce the beer and wine, and I'm thinking about the children that may be there if they're not supervised or they're not with an adult.
Yeah.
If that is something that becomes a problem for you, because then parents can say, oh, we can drop them off because they're taken care of, there's someone there.
Yeah.
And I know that does happen.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And now I'm thinking about the introduction of the beer and wine.
Yeah.
And the children without adult supervision. So I was putting that together in my head. I also realized that most of the places that have bowling have something other than just a Pepsi or Coke.
Yeah, yeah.
So I do understand the reason in asking that, but then I thought, well, it's a mix. It's kind of, your customers are mixing age.
Yeah, and that's the reason why we would like to, our policy is to have a limited area where we, our own policy, where we would serve the beer and wine, so that we really don't want it in the game room because then we lose sight of what's going on with the beer and wine. And because the way our bowling center is set up there with the tables right out in front of the control counter where our attendants are, they have a really good visual cue of where all the drinks are.
That would be a concern for me if you hadn't addressed it. Thank you very much.
Doug?
Could you actually just give a little more detail as to what you plan to do to let your consumers know what your expectations are? So they come, buy their beer or buy their wine in a clear glass.
Yeah.
And there are signs saying, you can only drink it here, do not take it further?
Exactly. In our, in our other centers, we have signs at the entrance to the game room area that there are no alcoholic beverages allowed in the game room area.
And the same thing about the bowling area, you don't really want them?
Yes, yeah. The only thing that we, at this center here, we do have a small little party room that's off of the side of the bowling area, and sometimes we'll have a, you know, an adult group that might come in that may want to have beer and wine in that room. It's separate from the game room, but it, but it leads off of the game room.
I've been to many parties there, I know. No beer and wine parties, but.
No drop-offs.
Well, I got dropped off there. I was there when I was 10.
We've had some 50 and 60-year-old birthday parties with, and that's, that's usually their spot where they like to go. They like to be separate from, from the kids.
Yep.
Stan?
Yeah, I don't see anything here from our Inspection Services Department relative to whatever alterations you're going to make. You said you're going to put some kind of sink area in there and.
Yeah, I do have a very basic diagram here that we just had made up from our contractor that.
Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, we don't even have the area where the bowling lanes are, so.
If you overlay that on the plan that I provided for the floor plan, you might be able to tell that the long area is the, yeah, is the service area there. And where the hand washing sink is, which is on your left hand, I believe, that's where the game room side is. The lanes are on the other side.
Yes.
On the right side.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this license? Yes, by all means. If you go to the microphone, please.
I've seen the, I'm the building owner, I'm Paul Larry, and I've seen the Ryan operations where they do have beer and wine, and they control it very well, and I don't believe there's been any issues in any of their places, and I'm sure it'll be the same here.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the license? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the license? Okay, then a motion to close the public hearing?
I know we close this public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The hearing is closed and now we will take up.
I would move approval of the application for a new wine and malt common victual license for Ryan Family Amusements. Shall I ask a question?
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Stan?
Just a question, really, and that's the whole tips training for the servers and what have you. I assume you do this routinely in your other locations where you hold these licenses?
Yes, all of our, all of our employees are tip-trained.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? The motion's unanimous and it carries, and thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you very much.
See if I can improve my bowling score.
At least you threw the score, because maybe the math will be skewed a little bit. Your score will go up.
Wow. We'll see. Okay, thank you, good night. Okay, now we're under general business. And the first item is to discuss and vote to approve the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to release funds in the amount of $120,000 from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund for the St. Mark's Road Affordable Housing Project. Patty Haney, welcome Patty.
Hi, I am Patty Haney from the Community Preservation Committee. I am the representative of the Falmouth Housing Authority and also Chair of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. I'm going to keep this really short because you heard all about this last week.
Yeah, we did, actually.
And it's late, so you're very familiar with the project. At our last meeting, the Falmouth Housing Trust came and presented to the committee. To be very brief, the committee voted unanimously to support the project and to recommend that you vote $120,000 towards this project. I don't know if the new selectmen are aware that they are the people, this board is in charge of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, and it's your vote that releases or commits that money. And we just ask that you do. It's a good project.
Give us a motion, I would move approval to releasing the funds of $120,000 from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund for the St. Mark's Road Affordable Housing Project.
Second?
Is there a discussion on the motion? Yes, Sam?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The question of the septic system versus a sewer connection. When are the, when's this going to happen? Are you counting on searing, the sewer to be available?
Annie Seganik, Falmouth Housing Trust. A condition of the RFP was to cite the septic systems along the road so that when that area is sewered, it would be an easy access into the home to do the connection. We're not there yet with the sewer and Mr. Batem assured me it would be some time.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Are these units going to be for rent or for sale?
Sale.
They are going to be?
Homeownership. And the income level is 80% of the area needing income or above.
I bet Annie has the poster.
I do. I know, the second that I don't believe. So as you can see, this isn't low income by any stretch, but this is people that generally would be just starting out, hopefully families, and they will be owning the homes, but they will be restricted, so they can't be resold for, you know, huge profits.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Oh, you already made the motion. We have a motion and a second, and now we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one opposed, then you're unanimous, because then that great, the motion carries. Hooray. Very good. Thank you. Great project. Now you can get started, right? Good.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, we have some committee interviews. The first is the Commission on Disabilities, and the candidate is Elizabeth or Betsy Zimberly? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. Well, please come and tell us why you are interested in the Commission on Disabilities.
Okay. I have lived here for 20-some years, and I never really thought about it until I got a grandson who has cerebral palsy. He's five now, and he just got his mechanized wheelchair. He is so happy. For once, he's going where he wants. So I figure I can be the voice of kids. I also can drive, I'm able-bodied. Some of the people on the committee are not as able, and I figure I can be a great help because here I am, able-bodied.
Right.
So that's the reason why I thought I could be of service to the committee and the town.
Having, having a grandson at that age with cerebral palsy certainly has given you opportunities to learn a lot about how to care for and how, and what the needs are.
Oh, yeah.
Could you just talk a little bit about that, maybe?
Well, you know, in the very beginning, I thought, well, he'll walk. I mean, we can get him through this, but it doesn't always happen that way. You may wish it, you may want it, but it doesn't. He always had to have special care as a baby because he didn't hold himself the same way. He's such a happy kid. His, his, his parents, I, they're so terrific, you know? They'll even wrestle with him. Trying to treat a kid as if he's pretty normal or as normal as you can, but being very careful, is so important. And, you know, one of the things, when we went to the playground, other than sitting in the swing, there wasn't much he could do. And he, now that he's five, I'm not so able to, to carry him up all these things and then to put him to have to go down the slide. So I'm aware that there are very special needs, and one of the things that was really hard, and I'll make the town aware, the little rubber seats that you can fit their feet into and they're well-protected, I barely could get him in and out. His, he wears a, a plastic thing on his leg, and it would get caught every time. And here I am, one hand around him, ooh, that stuck, no, can't get that, you know? And so, one of the things is, is that we, there are, I would love to go and at least look at a potential swing that doesn't work that way, that would make it easier for a child who is as disabled as my grandson is. That was the only thing that I can think of about the playgrounds is because I had so much trouble. But I guess that's all. I, I feel it is important for, for the town to be aware of some of these things that can be issues for, for the parents and for the kids.
Thank you for those insights. Becky?
You have a sentence here in your application that said, "I can drive committee members around to test access."
Yeah.
Can you just tell me a little bit more?
Okay, because it, one of the things that they do is they go around. You, in fact, I drove Nancy Serbin, who is a member of the committee, who's completely in, in a wheelchair, just last week, and we went and we went to every single beach. And we looked to see how many, how many spaces there were, and we went up and down the ramps and we, and when she felt there was a problem, we took a picture. So, you see, I can do that kind of thing and, and not have her, you know, dependent on, on someone else. Or, you know, those who can't seat or drive, I know some of the, the members on the committee have real eye problems, so I'm, I don't know for sure, but I suspect that several of them may not be able to drive anymore. And, and it's pretty tough to get around if you can't drive.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else have a question?
Just appreciation for your putting yourself out there to join this commission here, here to find something that connects to your family and that you can participate in. I would nominate Betsy Zimberly for the Commission on Disabilities.
Second?
Second?
Term ending June 30, 2017.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Welcome. And our next interview is for the Conservation Commission. They have three full and two alternate positions open, each with terms expiring on June 16, on June 30, 2016, and June 30, 2017. Russ Robbins, here he is. A familiar face, welcome.
Thank you.
You're an alternate now.
Yes, I'm an alternate, and I decided to apply for a full membership, and that's why I'm here before you tonight, so to answer any questions. I enjoy the work, I got to say, and it's a very supportive group. It's kind of sad that we're losing two members July 1st. That's a lot of experience out the window. And so, wanted to press on and become a full member.
Questions for Mr. Robbins?
No, I think his application speaks for himself. I think, I think we're impressed with what you do.
I have one quick question, and it's what I often like to ask, particularly for people who have been on commissions. What's the favorite part that you find of the work that you do on the Conservation Commission?
Site visits.
I was going to guess that.
This moppet made that about visiting docks a couple, little while ago. And we do get access to some beautiful spots in town, you know? Been here practically my whole life and still haven't seen it all, I guess. And just to see the spots and make this town really special.
And one thing is I've been hearing about the, from the Conservation Commission is how much work is put into make a project work as opposed to make it denied, and I really appreciate that kind of effort being put forward.
So, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
For the term?
To appoint Russ Robbins to the full position, term ending June 30, 2017. Let's use him as long as we can.
Extend it, that's right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Unanimous. Yes, thank you very much. And next is the Town Building Committee, which has three vacancies. The Building Co. Board of Appeals has one, but we have Mr. Thomas Pender, who is applying for the Town Building Committee. Good evening, Mr. Pender. Thank you for coming.
He's put his name down for both.
For both. What is your preference?
Building.
Building? Okay. Okay, well, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are interested in being on this committee.
Well, I've been a, I'm retired. I've been a plumber my whole life, my adult life. I worked for the City of Boston Inspection Services for nine years, a mechanical inspector. I have some educational background as well in the construction business, mostly courses. I have a degree in public administration. And I guess that's about it.
Questions?
Sue?
I met Mr. Pender on the campaign trail, and he put me through my hoops and showed a great interest through, you know, in the town buildings and town administration generally. And based upon that information, I'm very pleased that you are volunteering and giving of your time and expertise, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that was my experience in meeting Mr. Pender, is the fact that someone with this qualification would look at the vacancies that we had on different committees and see what really made a match for you. Because you were willing to contribute to the town, and you, as you show, you had two or three places that your talents could be used. And I'm very pleased that you applied.
Thank you very much.
And I think building is probably the closest, as far as your concerns. So I highly endorse it.
Could you just go into a little details to how you think that your plumbing experience could be helpful to the Building Committee? I think it sounds like it could be, but...
Well, my understanding is that if you're on a committee, you're kind of an advisor to the board, to the board of selectmen. And where I've interfaced with city government in Boston, I, you know, I see that it's an all concept. It's not just one particular plumbing or electrical. And all these things interface with each other to complete a project. And I think that's where the plumbing would come in. I also think that public administration...
Absolutely, yeah. I would move approving, nominating Thomas Pender to the Town Building Committee, term ending June 30, 2017.
A second.
Second.
Good. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pender.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have an application for a sign code variance from the Falmouth Housing Authority for Schoolhouse Green Apartments at 138 T-Ticket Highway, East Falmouth. I don't, Tom Lacy, he's not here.
That's the Housing Corporation.
The Housing Authority.
Falmouth Housing Authority.
Yeah, Falmouth Housing Authority. The, here's what he says. "They want to erect this sign where I just mentioned. Through an easement, the tenants and visitors to Schoolhouse Green share an entrance and exit with the Falmouth Housing Authority's Taticat Apartments at 138 T-Ticket Highway. There is already existing signage at the proposed location, but is less effective than the proposed signage. If approved, the new sign will better assist anyone visiting either property and likely reduce the risk of accidents." And then he does give us a picture of where that would be, and the sign and the location.
And this does have the support of the Design Review Committee?
Yes, it does.
Having their support, the committee's needed to. We should go ahead and approve it, sign code variance with Falmouth Housing Authority.
I know there are a lot of people that have their say about signs in town. And I believe that this area, as you're coming from Stop &amp; Shop and Job Lot, and then you're continuing through T-Ticket, is very congested. And when I looked at this sign, I probably only looked at the top of it. I saw T-Ticket, 100, and 138, and very quickly, and I missed Schoolhouse Green Apartments. Now, my point is, this isn't so much my business, but it was my personal thought that that area is congested. And I know it is only one entrance. But if you're trying to tell people that we're here, I just thought that there needed to be a more direct sign. But if they feel this is okay, and then the commercial sign goes below it, and I'll bet that's kinda jazzy. So there would be a commercial sign, and then you're saying that the apartments, Schoolhouse, I, I guess maybe that's not our job to say. I just don't, I don't see the benefit of this sign, but maybe the people that do. I think it just fills in with the rest of the kinda clutter there.
Well, Noah Greenberg, the Vice Chairman of the Design Review Committee, has written a recommendation. And the Design Review had a unanimous vote to support this.
They did.
Support this application, yeah. So maybe let him try, Patty, do you have a comment?
I do, I wasn't prepared for this, but Taticat Apartments have been there for many, many years.
That's right, yeah.
And the sign is there. There was discussion by the Housing Corporation a long time ago about putting the Schoolhouse Green sign up in front of Schoolhouse Green. But you can't access it that way. The only driveway into it, other than the emergency, you know, that way, is through where the Taticat Apartments are. And that's why they wanted to put both signs there, because they wanna make it clear that that is the entrance and exit from both complexes.
I mean, I understood that. I'm just saying, I just look at it and just thought, I hope people see it.
Well, I think if you're looking for Schoolhouse Green, you'll be looking for a sign for it, I guess, you know? And it'll be right there.
Okay. I think another thing is the Design Review Committee likes to have signs with multiple properties on it. Because instead of having everybody have a sign, they like to see that multi sign or something like that.
And this is replacing the existing sign?
Right.
That's just a little bit, a little smaller.
Sam?
Let's say from firsthand experience, the 100 isn't on the existing sign, and neither is the Schoolhouse Green Apartments. And I drove a B-bus, and I'm looking all over the place for the 100, because I have passengers in there. And you only learn by trial and error. So this is much clearer to get, let people know what's in this complex, because the Taticat Apartments are the only thing you really see from the entrance. And you don't realize that the Schoolhouse Green Apartments are in the entrance and around and left, in order to be able to access them. So I think this sign makes it a lot clearer for people that are trying to find these particular venues.
Yes, and that sign had to be replaced anyway, because as you know, it was not in good shape and was not very complete.
Exactly.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
I move approval. Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Motion carries. We have Jed Goldstone here in the back of the room, member of the Board of Health. And I think he was anticipating he was gonna be interviewed tonight, but we don't have it. But since he's here, we don't wanna make him come back.
I was, um...
And if it's okay with, is that what you...
Yes, I was under, I was originally called for last Monday, but because we have meetings every other Monday at the same time, I put it off with the Selectman's Office, I thought, to...
Oh, to tonight? Well, if it's...
I didn't confirm it with this today, because I was busy.
Well, if it's agreeable with the rest of the board, you're here, so I'm happy to...
So I'm here seeking reappointment, reappointment to the Board of Health for a third term.
Your third term.
Three-year term. I've served on the Board of Health for the last six years. I'm currently the chair. I have, I have been the chair for the last year. I was the vice chair for the year before that. I'm also, this is, this is not a side, I'm a town meeting member for Precinct Four. I volunteered originally to serve on the board when we bought our house, figuring if I'm paying taxes, I should do something for the town. John Waterbury said, "Ooh, I have to step down, you need to take my place." I'm professionally a toxicologist at HOE. I have a PhD in chemical oceanography, but I'm actually in the Biology Department now. And I have several grants from the National Institutes of Health. I'm an investigator at the Boston University Superfund Research Center. And my research professionally examines pollutant chemicals, the effects of pollutant chemicals on developing animals, particularly in fish, which we use as a model to understand humans, but also other fish. But that's, again, that's sort of my research qualification to this. We've sort of tangled with a variety of complicated issues, shall we say, in the last six years, ranging from wind turbines to trash disposal to sewers and drinking water. But for whatever reason, I'm asking for another term.
We're all in the same boat, Jed. Anybody else?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions?
I guess both a point to make and a question. I think, I have no problem doing the interview, but I think we might have to do the appointment two weeks hence, and make sure it's on the agenda, just to, that we have posted that we're appointing someone to the Board of Health. And I just, I would feel more comfortable if we did the appointment later.
We can do that. Yeah, it will still be in time for the, we're meeting on the 23rd.
Right, okay.
So it'll still be in time for, before your term ends.
That's fine, just a clarification, because it just says, it just says interviews, it doesn't specify...
Well, actually, you're right. It does say committee interviews is on the agenda, and it doesn't say you or what. So actually, we could point you tonight.
It's not a big deal, but as long as I don't have to come up.
That's right. No, you won't have to come back. No, I think we can do it tonight. It's a renewal. So, and normally with a renewal, we don't even usually interview, we just appoint.
For a regulatory board, you have to...
Right, yeah, because George was up here last week, so...
So highlight of your experience on the Board of Health?
Do you want to highlight? Well...
I think you just did.
I tried to, yeah, I mean, I, I have to say, it's been very interesting dealing with, I mean, our aim is to protect, our charge from the state is to protect the health of the community. So it's very interesting to see how, how the various ways that that comes to, specifically to a regulatory board. And it's just been, it's been very instructive to me.
Anybody else have a question? No? A motion?
I move that we nominate Jared Goldstone to a term ending in 2016.
Eighteen, 2018.
2018.
Fifteen, no, fourteen. Seventeen.
Seventeen.
This is fourteen, 2017.
Twenty-seven. Too many numbers left.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Jed. Thank you for your service, truly. Okay, next is an application for a sign variance. And this is an off-premise sign for Paul Harney-Gall. And they request, they would like to place an off-premise sign on Route 151 at the bottom of the 28 ramp as you come off. But they don't say whether it's the ramp going south or the ramp going north. So, and it's not actually on the application, it's sort of important to know. Well, actually, they both, no, they don't come off in the same place. I have, I, isn't, is there a ladder sign there already when you come off the ramp on Route 28? I think there is, isn't there?
I had the same question, and I also wanted to know if the Design Review Committee recommendation or not, given the other competing signs.
Right, and we don't have any recommendation from them.
It's on public property also, right?
Right. So I think we need to send this back to the Design Review Committee, and I think they need to look to see if there isn't a ladder, a ladder sign at that end of the ramp on the opposite side of 151. Because we've had issues with these in the past. We had issues with signs coming off the ramp at Brick Hill Road, because there are a lot of churches on Brick Hill Road, and everybody wanted to have a sign. And we really want to limit the amount of signage normally, I mean, at least previous boards did. We don't wanna really put up a lot of signs. And sometimes on 151, there was a suggestion about a ladder sign, but honestly, it's been so long, I don't remember. So we need to refer back to Design Review, and although it's not, it is a variance as well, so we should have a recommendation from them. So that takes care of that. And with that, we will hear some reports from Selectman.
Yes. I'd like to know if you wanna have any discussion about what Mr. DeFrain was talking about this evening, or is it we have had our discussion, we've had our vote, and that's it? I don't know whether anyone had any other comments or thoughts.
Well, we normally don't respond either to public comment. But I think obviously, both the Police Department and we will be, we'll be aware and obvious of what's going on that day. And we will certainly look for reports from either the Fire Department or the Police Department regarding any issues that might occur. So I would say, hopefully, everything will go well, and that's it. But we've already voted it, it's already in place, and...
And I did not think it was an attempt to fundraiser and to make money. I thought it was a VIP.
I didn't think it was either. I thought it was a VIP, and they, it was an invitation to go into the tent, and I did not think of it as, it was a fundraiser.
I would not have been happy about that.
It was a thank you type thing for the volunteers, or, yep. That's the way, I think I voted on that in thinking, and I was surprised when he said fundraiser. But I just wanted to bring it up again, if you wanted to think about it. I felt very secure with the vote previously.
Any other reports from Selectman? Yes, Sam?
I attended the new Selectman's Seminar that put on by the Massachusetts...
Oh, good.
Municipal Association and the Massachusetts Selectman's Association. It was an excellent morning and afternoon with briefings on conflict of interest, the open meeting laws, some good discussion about finance, municipal finance, an opportunity to really hear experienced Selectmen talk about their, you know, their backgrounds and give a little bit of sage advice to the newbies. And so it was very worthwhile, and I am glad I had the opportunity. And it was free, and even the lunch was free.
Where was it this year?
It was actually at, what's the name of the lake? It was in Rantham, there's a, off of Creek Street...
Lake Corlucianus.
That's it.
Whoever can say that. Well, I've been to those in the past, and Becky, you've been to them in the past, and some of the other board members previously have been to them. And we've always found them very valuable.
You know, I guess one of the things I could say, I didn't realize just how, how our town structure is duplicated throughout New England, or at least throughout Massachusetts, I better limit it. But, you know, I mean, clearly, the model is pretty consistent throughout the townships of Massachusetts. You know, obviously, charters are different. But it was interesting to see the commonality that we have with other towns, and that was a useful insight.
The Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple items. On Tuesday, June 2nd, it was my pleasure to attend the first day of the Second Annual Cape, excuse me, it was my pleasure to attend the U.S. Coast Guard Change of Command Ceremony on that date, I'm getting my dates reversed. That was, of course, in Woods Hole. I was pleased to thank outgoing Commander Justin Longball for his distinguished service and his support of public safety, which we know personally in regard to both police and fire and related matters, and to welcome incoming Commander Brent Desiree on behalf of the town. Then stepping to Thursday, June 5th, I was pleased to attend the first day of the Second Annual Cape Coastal Conference held at the Community College. This conference included informative presentations on multiple water quality-related issues, and was particularly timely given Falmouth's recent municipal election and continued leadership in this same area. Then as a reminder to the board, as you're aware, we have a strategic plan retreat scheduled for Monday, June 16th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Highfield Hall. And facilitator Jeff Nutting will join us... And facilitator Jeff Nutting will join us once again for this retreat. And under separate cover, we'll be providing copies of the Strategic Plan as well. That concludes my report.
Doug?
On the mention of June 5th, it reminded me that I attended a meeting with Heather, that Heather ran dealing with the lighting throughout the town.
Oh, the LED lights.
The LED lights that are in the first phase have, I think by now, all been replaced in town. And if anyone has some concerns about what shading and the adjustments to contact the DPW, and that those are gonna be responded to very, very quickly. That has been their practice to, within two or three hours, get somebody out there as best they can and make any adjustments they can. The discussion is continuing as to what to do about the Admiral hat lights, and we, I think we're gonna get some more information over the summer. And hoping that we'll have a decision or a plan by August 1st as to what we want to do with those remaining 183 lights.
Thank you. I'd like to speak with the Town Manager. Did you want us to discuss the International City Managers Association meeting? As your sentence, your last, "Thank you for your consideration of this important matter." Is that any of our business?
Yes, definitely, Selectmen of Mopet. Thankfully, that's only taken up under a summary of actions, and I'm happy to comment on it. The board has been supportive of that in the past, and I appreciate your willingness to support it in September of this year as well. One of the things that I overlooked noting, although it is critically important, and I do wanna point it out for the board, is that funds have been earmarked for that in the existing FY14 budget. So, those funds are already available for that purpose. And I greatly appreciate the ability to attend, from the standpoint of continuing education, my colleague Heather Harper as well. We're both certified municipal managers, as the board is aware, and it's a responsibility and a title that we take very seriously. And continuing education is an important part of that. So, I wanna thank the board for that, and happy to answer any question or details that may arise as well. Thank you.
I wanted to say, I also attended that first day of the Coastal Conference at the Community College, and it was really, really, very, very good. And the speakers, I mean, some of them, of course, are from here, the scientific institutions. But Betsy Gladfelter was also a speaker, but that was Friday, and I didn't go to the Friday conference, so I missed her, I missed her talk. But George Toyfelter spoke, and he was representing the county, you know, in his position as Director of the Health Lab and the Testing Center that he has out at the base, which is just going, you know, full blast, really. So, he was very good, and people were very interested, and because that's what all the monitoring is about. You know, he's monitoring the systems that people are developing across the country. And when he started with that, the, I think the county came up with some money to help fund it. And now, he has it set up so that it is self-sustaining, that the companies who want to have their products tested by George have to pay. And so, now, what they pay costs all the expenses of operating the test site. So, it's no longer subsidized by the government, which is great. So, is there anything else to come before the board? If not, a motion to adjourn.
So, move?
Second?
Second?
Second.
So, you're the second.
You are.